All right, 6:34 PM, Thursday, June 17th, 2021, I call boards, the board selection meeting to order. We have a relatively short agenda tonight. This was originally intended to be just for discussing the mass housing letter regarding the 40B work, but however, we had to stuff a few extra things in here because last meeting is pretty, pretty well packed. So the first thing we're going to cover is annual town meeting review and specifically is because we still have to decide who is going to be speaking on which of the articles now. So a quick run through board members. The ones that we have to, we will be called upon to speak on are, and I'll read through all of these and then we'll go through them in, in, in order. Article four, which is the operational budget, article five, which is the capital budget, article six, which is a few small specialized transfers. Article seven, which is the school budget, article eight, which is the CPC, 11 is the tobacco road easement for Hamilton. And then 12 through 16 are citizens petition articles, 12 is the letter and the article in opposition to the strategic land investment ventures. Project 13 is modification of the earth removal by law related to blasting, 14 is modification of the public safety law for two access roads, 15 is citizen petition article regarding dispatch, emergency dispatch, and 16 is this petition article regarding the zoning by law recodification. So I don't think that Alan's going to be here tonight, but he had said that we just need to make a few, he would expect us to make a couple of opening comments about the, the operational budgets and the capital budgets. So let's take our four and five together. Who would like to speak on these ones?
Eli. Yeah, Becky. Did I miss something? I didn't hear you. Sure, I'm happy to do that.
Which one? Are the OpEx?
Say that again.
You'll do article four?
Yep, sure.
So that's Becky. And article five, CapEx.
I'll do that, Eli, although I'm not just, is this like a couple of one-liners that we've got to come up with because I haven't done this before?
Yeah, Greg can help you.
Okay.
It's basically introducing the article, introducing the major points, the capital projects, maybe a little bit of comment about the capital projects that we've done in the past and the ones that we have outstanding in the future. Alan is pretty strict about keeping the discussion to two minutes and for this, he'll probably want it less than that.
I'll comply with that.
So Eli, just on both article four and five, you know, pulling out some of the highlights that are in the finance committee report is, is probably a good, a good strategy.
Yep.
Article six is a set of small transfers and Alan had suggested that we just use Greg for, to answer questions on that. So we don't actually need to speak to that one. Article seven on the school budget. That is going to be introduced by members of the school district. And I don't think that we, I don't think that Alan was asking us to speak to that one. Article eight is the CPC budget and that one typically Sue Thorne or, or Jack Burke will speak to. So we don't have to speak to that one either. 11. There's the tobacco road easements.
I'll be glad to do that.
And Harrison, all right. All right, now we're on assistant petition articles. And I'm going to go through these one by one and discuss what we talked about at our last meetings on these when we, when we last talked about our taking our positions on them. So on the, the Yeah, sure.
Do we need to say who's seconding now or not?
No, that's already been documented, written up, and I believe printed. So.
Okay.
I thought that Alan already had those. Maybe I'm wrong.
But well, he has, he has both moving movers and seconders, but we've kind of changed the movers and second, the movers a little.
Well, then typically what we would do is we would, the mover would be the speaker.
Right, um. Okay.
So if we want to do that, then we'll say that the movers are the speakers for these particular articles and the seconders. On OpEx, I think Greg had sent around some proposed seconders. Shall we just leave them as they are?
Might change it just a little bit depending on the movers.
All right. So article four and five. Sarah Malish was seconding that one because of FinCom, she's the chair of FinCom, so we'll make Becky be the mover on that one. Article five, the same thing, we'll make John round the mover and Sarah Malish the seconder. We're not changing the speakers for six, seven, or eight. So tobacco is article 11. We had John round and Becky Jakes, so we'll change the mover to Ann Harrison. We're good so far. So now let's move on to article 12. All right, article 12 was the citizens petition article regarding opposition to the SLV project. And when we talked about this a few weeks ago, the board of selectmen voted to take no position on this because we're still in the process of debating and submitting our public comment letter to mass housing, which is due June 24th, which is actually after the annual town meeting. And so we decided not to take a position on that based on that basic technicality. And I think that that's all we really have to explain at the meeting and let the, this is a non-binding statement of position by the town. So I think that's the only comment that really needs to be made at the meeting. So who would, who would like to be speaker for that?
I'll do that.
Yes.
And may I just make a note that the last, the spelling of Ashley Oak's last name, the last name is incorrect on this. I think the proper spelling is O C H E S, I believe. Not O A K E S.
Uh, yeah.
And the same particle 13.
Okay, so article 13, earth removal. This is a modification of the earth removal bylaws and the board of selectmen, when we voted on this, recommended the advice to the planning board because it's the planning board that will have the oversight on this per the bylaw and they already had the oversight on the earth removal by law. Anyway, they're supposed to adjudicate any of the hearings related to it. So we had asked for the planning board to give their opinion on it and we would recommend their advice. So that's really all that we would have to say on this. And unless the planning board elects not to take a position on this. Greg, I was going to ask you earlier where the planning board now stood on this.
My understanding is they, they voted to not recommend going forward with this article as they felt that blasting was already heavily regulated by the state.
All right. So if the planning board is asked to discuss this, they can, they probably will be at Alan's discretion, but in any case, member from the board of selectmen needs to speak on this. Basically stating why we took our position the way we took it.
Happy to. If need be.
I can do that because it's in line with the previous.
Are you going to do 12 as well then?
12 and 13.
Okay. Having a few lagging issues with my cell service.
All right, article 14 is the change to the public safety by law regarding two access roads. And at our meeting, when we voted on this, we voted not recommending not approval, not approving this article because this is really more appropriate to, we felt it was more appropriate to zoning by law and should have gone through a public hearing process with the planning board per our normal zoning by law process. And that was really basically it. We, we didn't take a position on the safety issue per se, just the particulars of it being in this general by law as opposed to zoning by law. So.
Sure.
Becky, who was that?
That was me. Go in.
All right, article 15 was dispatch. And we recommended not approving because we're still in the middle of engaging the public on the topic and trying to provide them with some more of the information that we have and that they may not have and get, well, solicit feedback from them. So premature, we felt to, to make a decision on, on dispatch and this again is an advisory, a non-binding vote from town meeting. I am happy to speak to this. People want me to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you'll make. Yeah.
And the last one is article 16, which is zoning by law recodification. And I believe that that is going to be passed over. Last I heard, it was going to be passed over. And assuming that it is, we're not going to have to speak to it. So why don't, why don't we do this if, if for whatever reason, it doesn't have to be passed over, I'll speak to it. We we actually recommended passing over the article. And just to be clear, we recommended passing over it. Well, well, it's moved at this point. Because there now zoning code of agreement, zoning by law recodification articles on the, on the warrant. So let's just stick with that. There's no reason, as far as I know, there's not going to be any need for anybody to stand up and speak to this. All right, so. Go ahead, Jeff.
Can we come back just one moment to the language on article 11? It says at the bottom of it, per petition of the board of selectmen, and then it says, we take no position, and then it says, the board of selectmen recommends approval. I hope that's not how it's written on the warrant.
Article 11.
Do we take?
Do we take?
Go ahead.
We take means that the finance committee, this is the public finance committee report. So we, in this case, is the finance committee and not the board of selectmen.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, good to go. Okay, Alan will restrict comments to two minutes. Many of these hopefully will need us.
17?
No, 17 doesn't need a speaker. 17 is pro forma article that's placed at the end to make any adjustments to the tax rate or to transfer any funds depending on how the votes played out during town meeting. And we typically end up passing it over because we don't have to make any adjustments.
Okay, super. Thank you.
All right, so we're good to go. I will zip this list off to Alan. And we can, no. That's Ben.
So it sounds like it will not be necessary to have a meeting right before the annual time meeting starts.
Right. Is there any way that we would? Well. So the only reason we might is technically the planning board is meeting on Saturday. Is there anything that might come out of that that would require us to?
Why don't we post and cancel rather than?
Yeah.
Anic.
Yeah. So post for half an hour prior, something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would probably be in, in the meeting room in the, in the high school and can be in there if we need to.
Yep. Oh, I'm going to miss the days when we sat in the first grade room on the little bitty chairs. All right, let's move on to item two on the agenda. Short-term paying guest applications. We have two, one for number one, Bridge Street and one for 16 Forest Street, number two. And then we're going to do 16 Forest Street, number two. First, this is an application from Stephen Martin for well, 16 Forest Street, three bedrooms, one and a half baths. So Mr. Martin, we have you here tonight. Do you want to talk about this application a little bit?
Uh, no, just going through the process. Sonia reached out to me a few months ago and I guess if I want to rent it less than six nights, then there's a formal application. I think I went, you know, did all the requirements, but she just wanted me to jump on in for one last, any questions you guys might have.
All right, board members, you've got questions?
I, I have a question about the parking. Um, Mr. Martin, you said that you, you know that there are two to three spots to park on the left side of the driveway. Is that for everybody in the house or just for that unit?
Yeah, so it's actually a two-family and I'm, I have two driveways. There's one on the right side and there's one on the left side. The, my tenants on the first floor, they have the entire driveway in the right. And then the, the short-term guests would have the entire driveway in the left and you can probably put about two or three cars tandem in that driveway.
And is there a turnaround within the driveway or do people have to back out onto forest?
They back out.
Just because that's, I mean, you're, you're still a bit of a ways for the stop sign and, and add a bit of a curve. And I want, I, I just, you know, it's never a good idea to back out.
Okay.
Is it possible?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I've, I've been living there and that's, I mean, I live there too. So I, that's how I, I pull in and back out. I, I hear what you're saying with cars coming around the corner there. But it's a little, it's probably a good 50 to 75 yards up the street. And now that you guys put the stop signs in there, the three-way stop sign, I think people are slowly catching on that there's a stop sign there.
Excellent. Glad to hear that. So is the unit itself, do you actually have three units there then?
No, I have two.
So you live there.
So I live there, I, I work a lot in Boston and so I have a place in Boston and I kind of will, will be doing both locations.
So do you have a tenant who's there all the time now and then you do the short-term rental?
Yes.
So how, I mean, because technically you're supposed to be living there.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Where, no, where do you, where are you living when the, when the part-time, when you've got your tenant and the part-time renters?
Well, I work a lot in Boston and so I stay in Boston occasionally.
But are you there when the short-time renters are there?
No.
Okay, just that, that's that's a essentially a prerequisite for short-term rentals.
Okay.
Um, anyway, I'm all done. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I just want to clear, clear that up, Stephen. So you, you live in the apartment that you're looking for short-term. You will stay there when it's available. Correct. When there are short-term renters, then you're staying in Boston whether you like it or not.
Correct, yes, yes. I, I have, I have kids in town. They live three houses down the street. So I'm, I'm there, you know, I'm there.
Okay. Okay, all right. So I, I see how this is evolving. Yep. Okay, another question. So have you, have you been doing short-term rentals for a while before you became aware of this, of this ruling? And I understand people become aware at different times. So you've done it for a little bit or?
Yeah, this is the first that I've heard of it.
Okay, yeah, I understand, understand. Okay, but you've, you've, you've been renting it kind of ad hoc for a little while with this back and forth residential arrangement.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So well, let me back up. Previously I, I had somebody inquire about renting it. They were looking to move back from the area they were in California. They needed a place to stay and they, they wanted to rent it for me for like 45 nights. And I, and you know, because it's not less than six nights, I, I guess I'd need an approval from that. So that's kind of what initiated it. And now that it was on Airbnb, that's when I got reached out, I got the letter and if I wanted to do the six nights or less, that's what I'm here for. I don't have to do the six nights or less, but.
Um, Greg, I'm not as familiar with this by law as I should be. Is it in fact a requirement that the landlord be in residence when property is used for short-term rental?
So we, we are not explicit about that. What it says is that it's designed for owner occupied dwellings. But we don't explicitly say that the owner has to be there when it enters there. Yeah, it's silent.
Specifically, the language goes like this. It's in the applicability section and it says the rental of residential premises to short-term paying guests is allowed in owner occupied residential premises pursuant to being licensed in accordance with this by law and consistent with the zoning by law. So the question is, is in this gray area, when do things start turning into a property where its owner occupied for one week out of the year and then short-term rented the rest of the time? And where do we go if we start down that slippery slope?
Eli.
Go ahead, Becky.
I seem to recall when that was crafted, that by law and the intent was that it was supposed to have the owners there so that you're not an absentee land, land person. And therefore you're not overseeing what's going on with short-term renters. And I know it doesn't say it flat out, but that's what the intention was. Also, I would like to clarify the number of bedrooms. It, in the description, it says three bedrooms. But on the drawing, there are two bedrooms on level two and two bedrooms on level three. So that's four bedrooms.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's really three. That, that bedroom on the top is more like an office. It's got the, you know, you can barely stand up there. So I'm only using it as three. I don't want, I don't want more than that there. Trust me. That's, so my, my drawing is kind of what could be there, but what's accurate in the listing is the three.
So what furniture do you currently have in that one room? I mean, is it sort of?
Well, it's, it's locked.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Gary Gilbert, did you have a comment or are you withdrawing?
Well, I would just add, if I could, Gary Gilbert, 11 Magnolia, that the standard for owner occupancy is pretty much 51% of the year. If you want to exceed that, then I think you, it's incumbent upon you to be more explicit in the law itself. And then as far as the fourth bedroom, the building inspector is supposed to make an inspection here and there's estate standards for slope ceilings and for square footage requirements as to what defines a bedroom. So that could pretty easily be the opinion of the building inspector.
All right, thank you.
Can I just clarify that the, the, the drawing that I gave is, it's, it's not a very good drawing. But in the description, the ear, the ear B B listing itself is three. So I just want to clarify that it's three, not four. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want four, but yes, we could get the building inspector to verify that.
The text of the application says three bedrooms and one and a half bathrooms. Says master bathroom sleeps two adults, kids bedroom sleeps one and kids bedroom sleeps one. Board members have any additional questions?
Mr. Martin, um, would you in fact be occupying that apartment 50% of the year?
Yes.
Not, not including times when it's rented for longer periods? You, you would be there?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Eli, so I have a little bit of a conundrum here. 50, 51%, I can see Mr. Martin is there 51%, but of course, he's never there when the short-term renters are there. So the short-term renters can be there and I, I know you're kind of wading into this, Mr. Martin. You're not sure what the market is and how things are going. You've had certainly inquiries with the longer-term things.
Yes.
But not so much with the short. But not so much with the short-term things. But it's quite, it's quite feasible that you can be there. I understand more than 50% of the year, but still you'll never be there when the short-term folks are there.
Correct. I will, I will not be there when someone's in the unit. Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, we're, we're talking, you know, we, we got fall, spring and winter where, you know.
I, I understand not a whole lot's necessarily happening in those, right now it's probably kind of intense, but.
Yeah. Um, but yes, my intention is I actually plan to be there for probably 60 to 70% of the time.
All right. So any other comments from board members?
I move to approve the application for short-term, um, rentals at, uh, 16 Forest Street, number two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, roll call vote, Mr. Round?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bob McTurner?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen votes yes. All right. Thank you, Mr..
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on to our second application. Which is, um, One Bridge Street, um, by Nicole and William Will, 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 Whittlesey?
Whittlesey.
Did I get that right?
Whittlesey.
Whittlesey. All right. Um, you two want to give us a brief overview of your application?
Um, we just submitted this, this standard application asking for short-term rentals. And I received an email back from Sonia saying to please attend this meeting tonight to answer any questions you may have.
All right. So we'll ask the same question about owner occupied or not on this one. Can you talk about how the property is held and how you're going to be renting it?
So it's a, it's a one-bedroom, um, house. And we wanted to do some short-term rentals here and there to sort of offset the costs of maintaining it, um, and owning it. And, um, we, we also have a house down the street that we could be at over the summertime, very, you know, just four or five houses away. And we did hire a property manager for when we are at home in Sherburne, which is about an hour away.
So where do you regularly live?
Sherburne. But we are up in Manchester as often as we can in the summertime. And we are looking to move to Manchester permanently within the next couple of years. And that's why we begun this process with buying the properties.
So you own two properties here. Are you going to be moving into one of them in Man, in Manchester?
Yes, we actually have three. Um, and one of them is a two families.
So if your main residence is in Sherburne, it seems hard for us to to categorize this as an owner occupied house. In Mr. Martin's case, it was pretty clear that he was living there most of the time. It sounds very much like you're not and you generally won't be around, um, during the periods of time when it's going to be rented.
Well, it's a one-bedroom house, so you couldn't.
Couldn't do that regardless.
Yeah. But we have hired a full-time property manager who will, who will manage it and, um,
When we're not there.
When we're not there. And our goal is to relocate up there into one of our units and, which is 200 yards away.
Yeah. Board members have comments?
Unfortunately, the bylaw doesn't say anything about property managers. Mind you, you can still rent it as long as you rent it for more than six nights.
Well, that's, that's something we're willing to do. You prefer not to. We'd like to have the flexibility to rent it shorter if need be.
I understand. Um, but there were, um, there were compromises and made when we put the short-term paying guests, um, by law in place. And those are made to, um, you know, satisfy residents who are concerned overall about, uh, lots of, um, small Airbnb beings popping up without, um, owners around to, uh, generally watch out, oh, and watch out over them. So I, I can't see a reading of this where the, um, by law would apply in this particular case.
Eli, if I may?
Yeah. Yeah, Becky, go ahead.
I also, I also have a concern with the lack of parking. Very little parking in that area. Especially if you don't have a town sticker. Um, and for people familiar with the area, that's, um, a problematic intersection anyway. And, um, I just, I think there are, I think it boils down to the fact that the bylaw doesn't provide for this.
The, the other one, the two-family home we have has three off-street parking spaces. Um, one would be designated for Bridge Street. So there would be an off-street parking spot available to our tenants.
Okay. Just in, in your description, it says there is no parking available to guests on your application.
I guess, I had thought of it at the time when I filled out the application, but we do have that ability to do that.
Good option.
It's just a short walk.
Yeah. Okay. Well, um, regardless, I don't think that we can entertain this under the, uh, the way the short-term game pain guest bylaws written right now. Uh, so I'm going to make a motion. Location can still be, um, rented more than six days. It just doesn't apply under the short-term paying guest by law.
Second.
Second.
All right. We're all, any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Bob McTurner?
Just to clarify, yes, vote is saying that this does not apply under the short-term law.
That is correct.
Yes.
Um, Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen votes yes. Um, so sorry, but yes, you can still rent it, uh, more than six days. It just doesn't apply. Uh, the bylaw just doesn't apply here. All right. Thank you for coming this evening. And, um, I'm going to move on to agenda item number three, which according to committee reappointment. So these are reappointments for members who are on boards already who, uh, whose terms are expiring and, um, wish, have expressed a wish to be reappointed. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read through this list of people who wish to be reappointed and along with their terms. If there's any of that, um, board members want to hold or discuss, we can. And then if not, we'll take a motion to block vote these in. All right. Um, Action Inc. Representative Gretchen Wood for a five-year term. These are all terms expiring in 2021 unless I say otherwise. So they will be terms to be reappointing, uh, for June of, um, 2021 plus whatever term their, um, uh, their term is. So it's five-year term. Then in 2026, Gretchen Wood's term would expire. If it's three-year term, then in 2024, uh, term would expire, et cetera. All right. Moving down the list, ADA Committee, Lisa Bonneville and Gretchen Wood, both three-year terms. Affordable Housing Trust, Margaret Driscoll. She is the Board of Selectmen's, uh, delegate, uh, representative, or the, the designate, that's the word. Um, this is a two-year term. Chris Olney from the Planning Board, Nancy Hammond from the Housing Authority, and John McDonald from the CPC. The zoning Board of Appeals, Sarah Melish for a three-year term. Also Sean Zahn as the first alternate. Um, and John Benares, um, all for three-year terms. There is an, a, another one, James Mitchell, who wishes to be reappointed for two years. Also for the zoning Board of Appeals. Um, Board of Assessors, Jeffrey McAfee, a three-year term. Uh, Bike and Pedestrian Committee, three-year terms for Ann Cal, Amy Calman, sorry, and Terry Cowman. I'll say this again, Amy Coleman and Terry Cowman. Because we do have an Ann Calman that works for L.A. It's not the same. Emergencies Response Committer, Coordinator, Todd Fitzgerald for a three-year term. Community Preservation Committee, Jack Burke at large, um, three-year term. Markwell from the FinComs, Joe Sibella from the HDC, Joan McDonald at large. Conservation Commission, Steve Gang as chairman, uh, Henry Ottinger. Uh, you know what? I'll take back the chairman because that's decided by the Conservation Committee. The, the Steve Gang and Henry Ottinger. Council on Aging, Stephen Gillespie. Three-year term. Downtown Improvement Project Committee, these are all one-year terms. Steve Carhart, Per, Zvetka. I'm going to get this wrong. Zvetika. Uh, he's not here to tell me I'm wrong. Gar Morse, Linda Crosby and Gordon Brewster, all one-year terms. Emergency Management Director is Jason Cleary is the Assistant Director, one-year term. Finance Committee, three-year terms, Peter Twining and, uh, Albert M. Creighton III. Also known as Maury. Harvard Advisory Committee, three-year term, Stephen Lauber, Philip Lady. Uh, Health, Board of Health, Paula Follow, Paula, Paula Polophilius, three-year. Historical, Historical District Commission, um, three-year terms, Joe Sibella, Richard Smith, Rosamund Costello and Robert Coppola. Manchester Coastal Stream, three-year term for Francie Cottle. Um, Memorial Day Observance Committee, one-year term for the American Legion, uh, and Legion Auxiliary. Manchester Energy Efficiency Programs Advisory Board, one-year terms. Dennis Dixon, Stephen Carr, Sean Stallings, David Walls, Andre Kuhnman and Carly Cook. Open Space and Recreation, three-year terms, Helen Bethel and Sheila Linehan. Parks and Recreation Committees, three-year term, Sean Daly and Muffin Driscoll. Board of Registarians, three-year term, Bruce Warren. Seaside One Committee, three-year term, Merritt Miller, Shellfish Constable. One-year term for James Eldon. Tree Warden, one-year term for Tom Henderson. Winterfield Committee, three-year terms for Matthew Brzezinski, Michael Carvello and Sue Thorne. That's our list. Oh, no. Yes, it is our list.
North Shore Task, Eli?
What's that?
Um, North Shore Task Force Rep, Christine Dele, Christina Delecia.
Oh, I missed reading one. One-year term for North Shore Task Force Rep, Christine Delecia. From the Planning Board. Any questions or comments from board members? Any holds that they want to place in here?
Nope. John a motion?
What's that? Actually, hold off. There's a, a question from Member of the Public, JB.
Uh, good evening. You're my Jack Burke, the Community Preservation Committee. Uh, the Community Preservation Committee would respectfully ask that you stagger the at-large, um, uh, terms. And we, it's, we suggest that you appoint, if you choose to appoint me, that it be for one year. Joe McDonald for two years and Sue Thorne's vacated position for three years, whoever you may choose to fill that position. The others, the other six positions are statutory. And sometimes it, those boards will take care of any turnover on their own. But the Board of Selectment, uh, appoint the at-large, uh, specifically. And we'd like it to turn over maybe one per year rather than what's happened this year.
All right. So can you, uh, read me your debt, date you requested?
Jack Burke, one year. Joe McDonald, two-year term. And the, the vacant one, three-year term, whoever you should choose to fill that position.
Okay. So the change tonight would be currently we have Jack Burke, Markwell, Joe Sibella and Joan McDonald, all is three-year terms. And what you're requesting is that it be Jack Burke for a one-year term. Markwell for a three-year term, Joe Sibella for a three-year term, and Joan McDonald for a two-year term. Accurate?
Joe Sibella is, is not part of the at-large. He's a historic district rep.
But his term is three years.
Yes, but the, the three I'm talking about is myself, Joe McDonald in the vacant position.
Right. We're not doing the vacant positions tonight.
Okay. So just myself and Joe, one year for me, two year for Joe, uh, Joe McDonald.
Okay. Um, Greg, any comments on that?
No, I think that's, no, I think that's fine.
Board members' comments?
Makes sense.
Yep.
All right. Can I get a motion then to prove the block that I just stated along with Jack Burke's, uh, recommendations for shifting the two at-large terms? All right. That was second for man Harrison. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, roll call vote, Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bob McTurner?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowling votes yes. All right. Now move on to item four on the agenda, which is a draft mass housing letter. Before we do this, I'm going to run over, close my window. Somebody's mowing it. Okay. So we have a draft, um, letter that, um, I want to thank Greg and town staff for putting together for, um, uh, to go to mass housing regarding the, um, strategic land ventures application before mass, mass housing. For the 40B project. And this will be our, our opportunity review. We also have received letters from, um, well, a number of different places. We received some letters from, some folks regarding, uh, trout species in the area. Uh, we've also received, uh, significant write-ups from the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust, from the Citizens Initiative, uh, uh, for affordable housing. And, um, also from the Planning Board. And, um, some of the, these comments have been incorporated into the, uh, write-up that we are putting into mass housing. All of these letters will be included. uh write-up that we are putting into mass housing all of these letters will be included with our package to mass housing. In their entirety. Um so tonight when we go through this. Um oh we also have some comments from from John Witten that we received um very recently. Uh but proposed edits to more options to um the letters the letter that Greg gave us in our packet. So tonight when we go through this what I I don't want to do is go through uh go through it line by line looking at typos if there are typos or other basic formatting issues. Just get those to Greg and we deal with them what I want to do is deal with the content as much as we can tonight and then uh we'll have another meeting on the twenty second which is Tuesday to finalize or and vote on the final version of this letter. Now I think what I would like to do is first go around the board members who've read um Greg's left letter and get general comments about the overall coverage the direction the tone and um uh get your your broad opinions about so let's let's start with that and then we'll go around um and go through the letter in more detail. Uh discussing discussing individual sections and any comments that uh around the content that you might have let's start with Ann Harris.
I I like it um I have also read John Witten's. I find it John's suggestions to be very aggressive um and probably unnecessary uh. I think the order um the the fact that this project does not meet the sustainable sustainability development principles is the strongest is a very strong argument um. And I like the fact that it starts by introducing then listing what we're going to talk about and talking about it and at the end saying what we talked about it good structure. And that's my opinion.
Alright John Round?
Yeah and I I I want to add kudos to Greg and his staff and I you know this was a lot of work to try and put this to put this uh put this letter together. And I I looked through the whole thing and I also looked through uh John Jonathan Witten's comments which are were very pointed I agree with Ann. They are uh pointed and but he he did make the statement that they have to be uh we've never seen other letters that have gone to the uh gone to mass housing for eligibility but he says you've got to be really much pretty much in their face to make any kind of an impression. I will take his advice on that I had a couple of questions well one first of all and it's processed and I don't know if anybody here if if you Eli or Greg know is a decision from mass housing with regard to an eligibility letter appealable?
Uh not that I am aware of um I think that the once they get their project eligibility uh PL they're they're ready to go to the zoning board.
Right and the decision there is appealable but I'm wondering if at this step something is appealable.
Well there's not a formal process for that John um Attorney Witten did tell me that he was aware of one time when um uh project eligibility eligibility letter was taken to court. Um and the courts basically said mass housing is a is a banking institution and therefore an appeal was not germane.
Okay okay so um there there are only two areas where I I we did not have a lot of time to go go through this and and go through the details but two points that I I just wanted to kind of address and one was the issue of uh this being financially unfeasible. And certainly Witten does address that and say i- it's not I don't think that's our concern but I think our concern and I uh is that if it is financially uh unfeasible financially troubled properties tend to be neglected understaffed creates problems for residents etcetera etcetera and I think something to that effect needs to be put in there to draw a line. This is what our concern is whether the investors are making money or not is not our concern mass housing knows that I think all of the players here are are aware of that but um I'd like to see something along those lines. And the other thing I just looked in a couple of spots and uh there is a concern about developing Shingle Hill entirely. I mean the message comes through we don't want to see anything going on there yet we say it's in a little limited commercial district. And by definition we might be interested in development in some other way now not necessarily people living there but there are other factors. Uh if the factors that affect are affected most by people living there are taken away. Uh you know if something else is built there not that it's easy to build anything on that spot. Um I think that anybody reading the letter would say well this is a little bit disingenuous in fact you just don't want anything to be built there when in fact our concern is primarily dealing with um residential building there. And I'm not sure where that message can kind of come through but that was my other observation. But overall I thought it was I thought it was good and I would I would stick with uh pretty much most of uh Mr Witten's comments to it.
Jeff?
I I would echo the um kudos to the staff that put this letter together. And under Greg's guidance and leadership and John Witten's input. We can come back to the issue of John's tone and the tone in this as we go further into this discussion. I I was particularly concerned about um in the six different areas I agree with John's comments about I I really felt like there was a um juxtaposition of limited commercial district and and this is not a good place it it constrains the limited commercial district I think that argument is is not a good argument. Because uh you know we at one point had talked about the and it's on record um that this might be um integrated into the little limited commercial district as the residential portion. Um so I I would like to stay away from that in and focus on um the uh sustainability um the uh incompatibility with our uh housing production plan. The environmental degradation and the safety concerns and in the area of safety concerns um the highlight was on disaster safety uh two-way access um to terrain and the developer being uh obstacles to developing two-way access um to the property. And much less so in terms of it's stated in the beginning about no internal sidewalks or bike lanes. There's nothing on that in the body of the letter um in terms of pedestrian. Well there's very little of it in terms of pedestrian access and particularly disabled pedestrian access. So um I'd like to see that beefed up just a little bit. Other than that I think it's a great job.
Okay I'll probably come back to you when we're talking about beefing up the um the letter with regard to sidewalks but let's 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 keep with the general comments and go on to Becky now.
Um I would agree and in in saying thank you very much for a well well done effort and job with the letter. I think that that in going before mass housing I am very comfortable following John Witten he has just vast amounts of experience in this and if he thinks a a a strong tone is is warranted I would be inclined to follow his recommendation there um I think one of aside from the more the obvious being um safety environmental and sustainability. When it comes to actually financing this project uh and and looking at the numbers and the Fed now making noises of potentially raising interest rates I I would love to find a way to say have them okay if mass housing is going to approve this and it dies on the vine after everything's been blasted um and we're left with a gaping hole and no water runoff mitigation anything like that I I just I think that that I just don't think we can focus on the financial aspects of this and and the fact that it's what a potential sixty year payback for before any profit is realized. How anyway? I I would stress as much as possible the lack of real financial feasibility. It's I mean just this especially going in front of mass housing uh when I anyway there you go.
Okay. Alright uh my turn so. Let's see I'll start with um I guess I'll start with John Witten's comment some of his comments I thought were fairly germane and and helpful in particular some of those comments later on in the document and I'll get back to those later on in the discussion. So I I'm of mixed minds about this um I was extremely grateful for John Witten's guidance and um legal leadership through the um the negotiation process that we went through and his education of us along the way. Uh I will note that ultimately at the bottom this letter is signed by me and um uh some of the tone the language coming from the proposed by John Witten. Is not what would come out of me and I think it is um aggressive without necessarily having a point to that aggression. I don't like to second guess him in that respect but this board letter is from us and um some of the initial um uh comments are I think a little bit over the top so I would probably tone them down a little bit um in in my approach here. Uh with regard to the comment of the overall content I was uh completely on board with all the the six major areas and the six major areas were failure to meet meet the sustainability development principles um overturning local zoning incompatible with our local housing production plan financially unfeasible um uh the environmental degradation and the safety concerns those are all areas. Well many of those are areas that we were attempting to negotiate in the lip and and we had reason to do so. One area where other board members have commented and I I will too is on the uh section in overturning local zoning and the the discussion about the proposal being in a section town uh of town zone for limited commercial development. I would modify the approach that is taken here a little bit. By saying that the proposed development would actually it would foreclose on some of our ability to uh uh do possible mixed use housing uh in an area where we have been undertaking zoning uh recodification efforts and um planning efforts for some time now and it's in town we think it's in the town's best interests to continue down the path of uh doing a better plan for the limited commercial district that's um is harmonious and this development uh doesn't really contribute to that and would limit our ability to enact what we think is an appropriate vision of the master plan. So those are my my high level comments. So uh and as far as the fiscal financially unfeasible uh aspect I think it's definitely worth pointing this out here because we do run the risk of the project not ending up being what it is proposed to be if if the the finances are significantly far off from what the developer has stated they are. And that's something that I think should be raised to mass housing now and should be something that's taken into consideration by the zoning board of appeals when it ultimately gets them. Okay so those are my main comments so we differ a little bit at the board level now on how we want to approach the comments from John Witten. And what I would propose is that we handle that aspect of the conversation and a little bit further on in our discussion because this he didn't change the structure of the document very much he just um changed some of the introductory language and some of the the comments um in the middle of the document. Instead what I would like to do is um discuss some of the the specific points that board members raised uh the principal one was around the um limited commercial district and the other one was a comment that Jeff made around the safety and sidewalks I think those are the two main ones. And if people want to have further discussion around fiscal uh or financial feasibility we can do that. But let's for the for in time being let's start with the limited commercial district and um I'll talk about that a little bit. Before I move on is that uh how is my audio is the the weed trimmer outside causing anybody distress?
Can't hear it.
Excellent.
I didn't hear it.
I'm not gonna worry about it.
You should tell him to come in.
Yeah.
Send them my way.
Uh alright so um so in the letter that was um I'm gonna zero zero I'm gonna focus down on this one section on overturning locals zoning and I'll read the section about um uh the summarization of it first and so the concern the key aspects that made the project inappropriate are well one of them is that it overturns local zoning the proposal is a section of town song for limited commercial development. And this is not a just not just a request for graded housing density but a request to put housing where no housing is allowed by local zoning. And then um in the detail section it says this inconsistent with our local zoning and housing production plan. And um the proposal not only seeks a much higher level density but also housing in an area zone for limited commercial uses only there are no uh residential units in this part of town in fact the large majority of the limited commercial district consists of parcels permanently conserved as natural areas. Town zones this area for limited uses due to the abundance of natural resources in the area particularly its water resources as it serves as a major water recharge area serving the town's drinking water well principal drinking water well the area includes numerous state map vernal pool pools rare and endangered species and other significant natural resources. Project site includes vernal pools and large wetlands thus to grant the large the high density residential use goes completely against the local planning efforts that have been underway for decades. So this is an area where I think we could spend a a little bit of time uh on the content. So board members have comments here is this is this first of all is this I know some several board members commented on is this the area that uh board members really wanted to focus in this respect. And if so can you give comments?
Eli, may I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Becky.
With mass housing. And their perspective. How much do they care if this? Doesn't fit our local zoning?
Well, that's, I think, part of my point, they don't, I don't think they do care.
That's where I'm going.
But. The reason, that's sort of the reason why, in part, why I felt that it was. I I think what they. Would care about in part is that the town is making efforts to. Discuss options for mixed use development up there, so. Some of the proposals that are being, have been put forth up there involve. Commercial, mixed use, commercial and housing. And those are efforts that have been, are intended to be much more cooperatively negotiated and worked out with the town. And carefully planned, and in fact, we've been holding multiple forums and discussions at the planning board level about how. How we want to approach that. In a fairly methodical manner. And this proposal, this development proposal undercuts that because. We can support a certain amount of housing, but not. If this development were to go in, it would eliminate, it would foreclose upon options for doing some housing. In the limited commercial district that we might otherwise be considering. And. That. That's not us trying to get out of. Building housing, it's us trying to have control over it.
I guess I don't understand how. S L V building housing keeps us from building other housing.
Well. It it doesn't accept that. I think it seems. Fairly obvious that if we built a hundred and thirty housing units that were purely residential and then built another hundred and thirty. Or another hundred or proposed another hundred elsewhere. That would, I think that would meet with a considerable amount of. Pushback from the community and concern over the stress that that would induce on the school system and the police, we already have that problem with the forty B as it stands. So. There's a limited amount of. Resources in town and to soak it all up with this one development on top of Shingle Hill is not. It's not at all ideal for us.
Nor is it ideal for the people left out at the other end, I mean, way out there.
But the rest of the limited commercial district is just as far out there.
Yep.
That's mixed use.
Yeah, but that mixed use is fifty, is fifty percent residential, that's what L C D requires.
Well, it's not that it's L C D requires that, it's if we end up going for a forty R, but we don't need to go down this road, forty R is what. Requires that.
That's, that's correct, you're right.
So. Other board members have comments on this particular area, is this, is this a section that have I named the right section that people had concerns about in the L C D and the language that the people had concerned about? Although we're not agreeing yet on what really ought to go in there.
It is, Eli. I would say that, as written. This, this section speaks more towards environmental degradation and the threat to the water supply. Then it does. Wrapping the L C D in there and the zoning issues in there, ignoring the zoning issues for local zoning. And the housing production plan. Seems a very weak argument to me. The strength of what's said here has to do with the threat to the town water supply. And in terms of where this particular project is located. Because as Ann said, we're talking about building residential units in that same area. Possibly building residential units in that same area, but putting them in a place that's much less of a threat to the local water supply. So I, I'm not sure, as written, that this. Delivers the punch that we want to deliver in regard to. The inconsistency with the housing production plan. The inconsistency with local zoning. It's a very weak argument because we're talking about possibly putting residential in that area anyway.
Yeah, I I would agree with Jeff's comment there, in other words. Putting housing in an area zone for limited commercial uses only. That's not a strong statement. You know, putting, putting it on, putting it in an area that can affect the water supply, that is a stronger story. But.
But that's not what this is trying to address.
No.
Trying to address the housing production plan and overriding long term planning efforts for local zoning.
You can do that, I think, can't you, without, without bringing in the L C D, I think that, that, you know, our housing production plan is trying to. Work on other uses as well in in that area rather than just saying. That. It's a limited commercial district, therefore, even though that is completely accurate right now, there is no, it's not zoned for housing right now.
Maybe we could just drop point two and take the substance of it. The natural resources into the environmental section. And the housing production plan into the town into into number three.
I would agree with that, Ann.
That seems reasonable.
But I had, I had a meta issue. Which I sent in separately. I was uncomfortable with simultaneously saying that this place is tremendously ecologically sensitive and we're planning to put a commercial development there.
Say that again, sorry.
I was. Didn't articulate it as well in the email that I sent, but. We seem to be simultaneously arguing that this location is tremendously environmentally sensitive and very difficult to develop. And that we were saving it for commercial development.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think we've found a way around that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think that's reasonable. All right, any other board members have comments on the. Limited Commercial District area and the housing production plan? All right. Greg, did you have any comments there?
No, I'm comfortable with what people are saying.
All right, thank you. Then I think what I'd like to do is move on to the public safety section in here. Maybe what we'll do is. Will include discussion from board members on. John Witten's comments as well as Jeff's discussion about sidewalks here, because here, I think. John Witten was offering. More content and while the language was a little sharp, there was more content in here that was, I thought, valuable, so. Let's take it, take it all together, and this is section six on public safety threats. Including John Witten's comments. So Jeff, do you want to go first, since you brought up the issue about sidewalks and. Lack of attention to. Discussion in here, I should point out. We do point out in this document that our complete streets, I think we referred to complete streets in your policy. Does call for us to extend sidewalks into the area. As it's developed and. Therefore. We think it's appropriate for the the site to have some sort of pedestrian support.
Can, can I suggest that we split six into two? One being accessibility. And the second being danger.
Yep, good idea.
That is a little awkward because we need to split the traffic engineer into. Danger and and accommodation for walkers and bikers.
I, I, at first I said, I thought what you just said made a lot of sense, Ann. But I'm concerned that it separates. The safety of safety of walkers and bikers and their accessibility to the site. Both leaving and coming. It separates that from public safety, and that's a public safety issue. You try and bring a wheelchair up that that hill. That's a public safety issue. Not in the sense of. Ambulance or fire or police access.
Maybe we want to say safety and then disaster. Find some slightly more elegant word than disaster, but.
Urgencies or something.
Yeah.
But along those lines. In terms of the sidewalk, don't we need to? I think for the complete streets. Shouldn't we extend that sidewalk now, say we have a commitment and do it?
Well, I think the policy is actually, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the policy was more when we do. Development, if a development is put in or if we. Do. Work running utilities under those circumstances, we set as a policy that we would extend sidewalks to cover the affected area. Do you want to clarify that for us, Greg?
That, that's correct, typically, it's sort of, when we touch a street, that's when we. Take a hard look at doing a better job with bike and pedestrian. Accommodations.
Thank you.
So, so when they put. A water line in there, they're gonna need to tear up a chunk of the street. And we will, according to our policy, at that point, since it's going to a development, be. Following the policy that we voted on and extending a sidewalk out there, that's what our intent be. So. Jeff, did you?
I think, I think that Ann's point is a good one and. The, the traffic engineer. As it's being, as his work is being. Presented both in the original letter and in in John Witten's recommendations for the letter. Does need to be separated. And more strength put into. For the public safety issues, more strength being put into that than just a comment about the curvilinear nature of the driveway. And the second part of that does, does address, the second part of that paragraph, or in John's. John's write up, it's all in one paragraph. Recommending accommodations for walkers and bikers. And how difficult that is, given the slope of the roadway. So I, I, I think that that separating the two things out is is possible. I don't want to dilute the importance of what the traffic engineer had to say. But I do want to highlight. With greater strength what the traffic engineer said about a second access, because that's what he said. And I don't see that, if I'm, unless I'm wrong about that, and I don't think I am. I don't even see that mentioned in here about a second, secondary access.
And where mentioned?
In the letter.
In, well, it is talked about in that, doesn't, doesn't. Didn't Greg put in that it's about the one that was rejected because it only had one egress?
It talks about it in terms of our local regulations, but I think the traffic safety engineer also raised this issue. And I don't, I don't see that being my life.
Oh, okay, so you're not talking about in paragraph three, sentence two, under number six, where it says in Lexington Woods versus Wolfam?
No, I'm talking about paragraph one.
Our study.
That says our local regulations call for at least two access points for projects over twenty units. And. And then. Goes on to the traffic engineer, but the traffic engineer agreed with that, in fact, underscored that. As an issue and saying that a second access was necessary. And. And Mr. Angler and S L V really downplayed that. Part of the report.
Well, what about, it does say the town hired in in paragraph two, am I just not. Understanding you, Jeff, I'm sorry.
It's probably the case that I'm not being clear, Becky.
Either that or my hearing aids aren't working that well today.
Uh huh. In paragraph number two of the traffic engineers' report is referenced. There's one sentence that says. That he highlighted a concern over just one access road and the curvilinear, steep curvilinear nature of the driveway. But the next, the rest of the paragraph is about. accessibility by pedestrians and bikes.
Right, right.
I think that we need to highlight more, more strongly the language of the traffic engineer, which said, this, this site needs a second access. Unless I'm totally wrong in the way that he presented his information, and I believe that he presented it as such. It's not just that he highlighted the concern over one access road. He said it needs a secondary access road for public safety purposes.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Greg? Greg, you're muted.
Yeah, that, that's correct. We can, we can certainly expand on that.
Just, just to strengthen that aspect of what he says. And that's where Anne's point about maybe separating these two issues of pedestrian and bike access and disabled people's access and public safety emergencies. Maybe, maybe a, a sought more solid point, even though we have to split up what the traffic engineer says. I don't think that's as much of a problem as founding this or diluting the issues by saying, he said this, he said that. So I'm agreeing with Anne again. I saw that eye.
I don't know. I would also like to have a final paragraph after the, after the safety, just hammering, you know, we have these six items that we, each of which we think disqualifies the project, just so that there's a summary.
Yeah, I like that idea.
All right. I think we covered the two main areas where board members had disagreements or thoughts about the content. Now I'd like to go back unless people have further comments on this particular section. And by the way, the, my, my intent here is that we give these, this comparatively high level guidance to Greg and we'll get another version of this out. And then we'll do our final review in the meeting on the 22nd. I think that's all we'll have in the meeting on the 22nd. Then we'll be going through with a fine tooth comb. Beginning to end typos, the whole, whole kit and caboodle with an objective of getting the final, final document approved on that night. So that'll just be a straight up editing session. So so the remaining aspects are, I wanted to go back and cover the tone and language of John Whitten's proposed comments and get some resolution from the board about how far we want to take it with those comments. I don't want to go through and, and review each of the editorial or editorialize on those comments tonight. I think it'll be picky, un and, and not productive. I'd like to characterize what we support and don't, and then let Greg and myself take a pass at moderating or unmoderating those comments. And then get a new, new copy out to people. So that's the one, one thing I would like to do. That's what I'm proposing. Second thing. We've received on the number of letters that I already cited from the, the main ones, the big ones from the planning board, from MECT and from SEMA, all of which were very detailed. And I'd like to recognize the amount of time and effort that those three letters clearly took to put together. And what I'd like to ask board members is have we missed any of the content from those letters that we think those, those letters will go to mass housing regardless? Have we missed any of the content of those letters that I think ought to be included or addressed? Or, or seconded and supported in, in our letter?
I have a question, Eli. Did, did anything ever come of, there was some study of vernal pools that was going to occur in the spring? And I did not see that content or comment on it, I think, in any of the letters.
Greg?
Greg?
So they, they did do those studies. They did find confirmation of the, of existing vernal pools. But I, my understanding is there were no vernal pools found in the proposed construction site.
And the footprint, yeah.
Right. I'll, I'll double check that, but that's my understanding.
Okay.
As, if I may, like, I was on the meeting for when, when that came in and correct me, Greg, if this doesn't sound right. They actually found a surprising number of eggs of the, the salamander, the spotted salamander. What they found is the, the yellow. More of the yellow and fewer, not so much the blue. The blue is the one that's the, the critically endangered one, from my understanding. But they, they were surprised at just how many eggs were there. They had not anticipated that number. And I guess the issues where the vernal pools were located was where the runoff would be and how, how would it be possible to mitigate the runoff into the areas where those vernal pools were? Ron, Ron Mast, Jacomo might be on this and might have some info on that.
I'll follow up also with, with the common com and make sure I have those details.
Any other areas where people think we need to include specific elements that we didn't otherwise cover in our broad comments?
Specific elements of the letters that
Yes.
others provided to us. I, I was impressed with the comments of the hydrologist Scott Horsley that MEC hired. And I think we should, we should reference not the, not, not at the level of detail that there is in the letter, but reference his study on the importance of the resource of Sawmill Brook. So that if the people in mass housing read all this material, which is questionable, that they would at least focus in on that.
All right, good. Do you think you have, have a good place where you can fit that reference in?
Yes. I can expand on the on that environmental degradation and, and the criticalness of the water supply and the water resources of the area.
Similarly, Greg, is the comments regarding PFAS, PFAS? And the DEP, Mass DEP has a fairly rigorous standard for that and that nothing in what SLV provided was going to, was showing us that they were going to meet that in their sewage treatment plant. Their onsite sewage treatment. I, I think those two aspects of, of the MEC letter, there are many, but those two aspects I think should be highlighted because that goes directly to water pollution. I think mass housing is much less concerned about what color the spotted salamander is. But they the drinking water issues, I think, are, are paramount here.
Yep.
Yeah, I think I think I agree with you. Other board members regarding other commentary from those three major letters. All right. And let's go back to the differential between the tone of the existing letter and the addition of John Whitten's comments and get to a landing. A landing ground here. So
first, we haven't decided to be a select board yet.
Yeah, that's a long discussion. I thought, I thought that we had, but I find that there's
It has to go before time meeting.
So, fine, we can change that. So my personal feeling is I'm a little reluctant to you know, actively attack mass housing in the tone of the language. Whereas some of the content articulating why one particular board rejected an application and mass housing should follow the suit, I think is that's not particularly objectionable then. Well, that's okay. I just, it's, I just don't think that something looks like a personal attack on mass housing should be coming from this board. And I'll put that out there as my primary comment and ask for, for opinions from other board members.
Well, we, we haven't walked in the shoes that John Whitten has walked in, of course. But as, as I read it, I mean, I said, you know, at what point does something like that backfire on you? And, and they, they look at this and they, they look at it as an affront. Now, Whitten comes across as if, hey, I probably, he's probably done it before, and that's not the way they're going to take it because they get attacked all the time. I, we don't know. But my initial reaction when I saw it is, I wouldn't want to get a letter that's that inflammatory. But maybe that's what he does. But I understand it's, it's, the words are coming from you, Eli. Unless you sign that off as for the selectmen or it's select board. Which case, then they're coming from all of us, but.
Have, has Eli, have you or Greg spoken with John regarding his letter?
Yes. Yeah, I spoke to him earlier.
I, I would, yeah. I'd like to know his.
He's, he purposely, you know, made it very aggressive just to, so to get your attention and to see your comfort level. He is certainly respectful of how, what tone you want to set. He is also very candid to say he, he, he fully, he fully expects a, a project eligibility letter to be written. Despite, despite all the arguments that are, will be presented, he says that basically we'll get a letter that says, thank you for all of your concerns. We advise the applicant to address these concerns when they go before the local zoning board of appeals for their comprehensive. That's, that's his prediction as to what kind of response we're going to get in the project eligibility letter. So even with that, he says it's still worth putting it in, but you, you need to be comfortable with the, with the tone and language.
My feeling is that, that the, it's wrong. Project is not right. And I, I think that, that to pussyfoot around, round it is not going to do us any good. I mean, I, I, not that, that we have to go smacking them, but I, I just feel that we need to be very strong in our wording and position and why we really know this to be wrong from their perspective. There being mass housing.
Yeah, I think, I think that that's certainly something that we can get across without going into, going straight, straight for the eyes, you know? And I have no problem presenting that view. Other board members?
What about the attacks on Mr. Angler?
Similar, any, any? Similar, any, any attacks that are, or any language that is personal and, or, or could really be deemed as personal, I think I have some concerns about.
I agree with that. I'm also not, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Go ahead. I, I, I'm more concerned about that. I think probably that I'm in mass housing. Because if, if Witness right, and I, I, I have no reason to doubt, we're gonna be seeing Mr. Engler again.
But I don't think, I don't know, John, that, that some of the language that's in this is going to prevent us from seeing Engler. I, I, I understand John's experience and his frustration with mass housing. I, I think language like, you know, certain things are a stretch at best. I mean, that, that's fine. But some of the, some of the things that are in this, you know, kind of indicate even, even mass housing would agree with, that's a little bit of a a problem as well.
One of the things I did like, one of the lines was where it's, where he said, but it takes responsible government agencies to ensure that they are not given, they being developers or anyone with a bulldozer, the license to do so randomly and negligently. I and then followed up by granting project eligibility approval for this project. The license is irresponsible for all the reasons noted in this letter. But perhaps most notably, notably because the project can neither be financed nor made financially feasible. I, I just think those are really good sentences.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with those. That level of response, I'm com-
I'm not, I, I, I don't think this sort of cat and mouse baiting is, is necessary, some of the, you know, the sentences that do that, but I think there are a lot of good, on point comments.
I feel like I have enough guidance to, with Greg edit and combine John's comments with what's here to in a reasonable way that meets the meets the guidance that you all have provided so far.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Specific sections that people let's put it this way, if there are specific sections of the John Wooden's proposed language that you individually think are very appropriate and should be retained in part or in whole. Can you zip Greg an email with those? So that we I would say hey, by the, it's gotta be by the end of the day tomorrow. We don't have an awful lot of added time left.
Yeah.
I think
Maybe we remove the town meeting, so.
It's probably gonna be my first free day, so yeah.
Yeah. So I think the goal would be to have everybody an updated copy by Greg, what do you think by, by the time we get to town meeting?
I was gonna say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna aim to try to get it done by the end of the day on Monday before town meeting starts. Yeah, give you a fighting chance to read it Monday morning or Tuesday morning.
Yeah. Or even potentially before then, we'll be technically in public session. You could, well, no, you couldn't. Never mind. Yeah.
I'll get it to you, you know, earlier in the afternoon on Monday. That's what I'll aim for.
Other comments from board members and that, by the way, there's, I'm gonna apologize to members of the public that were not going through a, a copy and presentation mode here, but it's got write-ups from John Whitton and it's kind of be a little bit of a messy process. But what I am gonna do is I'm gonna take a little bit of time to go through members of the public who are here and if you have particular points where you want to ask if they have been covered in the letter, I'll address those and if you find that they're not and have suggestions that, and for ways that they be included, then we'll discuss those briefly as well. Jeff, go ahead.
Just, just before you go to the public comments on this or, or questions about it. I just want to reiterate my deepest appreciation for the efforts that went into writing the letters that we received. The detail and, and specificity of those letters is is impressive and really helped me to make some of the comments that I made tonight and I hope that I covered my own appreciation of those letters and I think the boards.
Hear him, hear him.
Yes, hear, hear.
Yep.
All right, here we go. We're gonna take a little spin through the public. And so if you have questions about like, did you cover X, Y, or Z in the, in the letter, have you considered? We'll go over those in some detail and if you, and if you find that they're not there or your comments or your, or something that you think ought to be there. We can, we can consider it. We can discuss it tonight. We can discuss it. Probably we'll discuss it some tonight, probably. All right, start with Gary Gilbert.
Thank you, Eli. Thanks to the board for their great care and, and all your crafting. The planning board, we put together a letter we submitted to you and we made a couple points in there that I think are tangible and have traction. And I don't know how prominent they are in the letter you guys have drafted. But I think, well, there's a lot of things that the housing state housing board could ignore, but I think it's pretty real to address this issue of wanting an updated pro forma from the applicant. A partially destroyed site from a failed, economically failed project is a big financial liability to the town, potentially a big financial liability to the town. As is what you would want, what would we be able to do with a partially destroyed site? We'd have to bend over backwards and upzone or downzone the area just to get somebody to put something in there to make use of it afterwards. The potential impacts are, are pretty well tangible potentially. And I don't know how much that's in the forefront of the letter you guys have drafted.
The pro forma is not in the forefront. However, what you're describing could be referenced fairly easily in the financial section. And I think we could fit in a clause fairly easily to articulate that that's a concern of ours as one of the the financial issues. Sound about right, Greg?
Yes, I would agree.
Cause the cost of materials and labor we all know has gone bonkers and well, certainly he doesn't want to start on a project that's gonna fail, but the town does run a real fiscal risk.
All right, we will, we will do something there. Danny Hall. Danny, you are muted.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you for all the work you guys do. To the most, the recent Gary Gilbert's comment, the original pro forma was at $410,000 a unit. The most recent pro forma was, was at $510,000 a unit, I think. Which was gonna make the equity investors on a good day a 2% return, which is probably not sustainable. But I guess I'd like to make one comment with regard to John Whitten. I can tell you from firsthand experience that DHCD and I, I think mass housing looks at him as a persona non grata. And while I think he's certainly aggressively representing the town, having his name associated with anything in that application probably doesn't do us any good. So I think that's something that to take into consideration and I, I agree with Eli. I don't think you win by, you know, person, personalizing attacks. The, the, the question I have is pertains to the agenda and the Mass Architectural Access Board letter already sidewalks. I don't think that, that the board has addressed that. Do you intend to do that?
So. I'd actually had some discussion about that agenda. I mean, I think there was a and, well, anyway, so what my intent is, I know that there was a request about this. Well, my intent is to cover the basic aspects of what the board plans to do with respect to sidewalks, with respect to its complete street policy in this letter to mass housing. And then to take the letter to mass housing and forward it to the architectural committee. As opposed to doing a separate letter, possibly with a, a cover letter describing as we've indicated to mass housing. If this project goes forward, we do and expect according to our policies to be extending sidewalks to the area.
Okay, well, I think my understanding is based on conversations with a gentleman at, at the Mass Architectural Access Board that they have the authority to require sidewalks if there is, if there are sidewalk plans for sidewalks to the site. It's a it's a nuance, but my understanding is it would require SLV to install sidewalks, which then becomes the issue, are they ADA compliant? And undoubtedly would increase the projected cost of the project, which is already over $500,000 a year as proposed. So I think it's relevant and I think it's important that the, that the, the Massachusetts Access Board, Architectural Assets Board is fully aware of the town's intent to extend the sidewalks to the site in the event the project goes forward. Thank you.
Hi, it's Ashley and I'm on a cell phone, so I can't raise my hand. So please call on me when you have a chance.
Danny, did we cover your comments?
Yes, thank you.
Ashley, your turn.
Thanks, Eli. So just to follow on Denny's thought, my big concern, I guess it even ties into Gary Gilbert's, is the cost of the sidewalks is going to be immense with the ramp system and platforms that they'll need to create. And so even if they end up getting a project eligibility letter, I would like to make sure that we can somehow convince them to condition it upon the inclusion of sidewalks, because I worry that if it doesn't, you know, if they're not required at this early stage to include the sidewalks, then at the ZBA stage, when we go and force them to add them in, do they then get to say, oh, that's not economic? And I, I just wonder how having the sidewalks be added later in the game impacts that test of economic feasibility. Thanks.
I don't think I can answer that question tonight. That is something I think that we would need to refer to John Whitten. So we can defensively construct some language around that and, and ask for the legal opinion in the meantime. Greg, do you know the answer to that? I'm guessing you don't.
I, I don't know the detailed answer to that. It's, it's something I would like to do a little more homework on.
Okay. All right. Mike Dyer.
Thanks, Eli, and thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to weigh in and we're grateful that MECT that you've that you've really taken a letter seriously. There are a couple of things in there that I, that I haven't heard in this discussion and I, you know, I guess it's probably because we're flying blind. We, we don't, we can't see what documents you guys are looking at. But the two things I like to mention are firstly, destruction of habitat, and we alluded to this in the letter, the fact that they have to blast the top off this hill and just profoundly really destroy the the habitat and the, the trees, everything that's on that hill. And the effects that it has on all those resources that are nearby. All the conservation land that's, that's, that abuts it and that's proximate to it, which is owned by the town itself, by the trustees of reservations and by MECT. I don't know if mass housing cares about such things, but that's, that to us is a, is a very important point. And the second thing we mentioned, and again, I don't know if you folks have covered this in your draft, but it's the, it's mass housing's concept of typology. And we looked at that, thought about it for a while. They, they, they refer to it as adjacent building typology. In this case, there are no adjacent buildings and in our view, that is not good typology. And it's, it's, neither is a good typology that this building is by far the largest building in town, other than the two school buildings, I think. It's totally out of scale and, and we think inappropriate typology wise. That was the other thought that we had to offer and I hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thanks, we will. So we, we do have a section on environmental degradation and we note the impact of, well, it's, that's the whole areas and environment is environmentally sensitive area that shares bounty lines with conservation on, you know, areas owned by the town and by you folks and trustees of reservation. And there are significant wetlands there as well as un-mapped fernal pools and we discussed the impact of blasting. We discussed the impact of blasting and the volume of blasting and, uh, the impact of. Water runoff, uh, where, yeah, water runoff and, uh, the runoff and the blasting. And. The specific aspects of typology that you're referring to, we don't refer to in here. I think. We can, I think we can make a reference to it in, um. In the environmental degradation section and refer out to the MECT letter. We could, we could do that, I think, Greg, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I, I was, I was jotting some notes here, where, what would fit in and we can make that reference. We.
Okay. Maybe what will. So I'm, I'm sensitive to, um, people, um, the fact that folks, um, in the audience are blind, uh, we don't have it up in presentation mode right now. And, um. I think it would be, um. Feasible for us to send out, uh, where we're referencing documents written by, um, MECT, for example. That it would be feasible and reasonable for us to send a draft out for, um. You folks to look at. Um, ahead of the next meeting that we have, Greg, do you? Do you think that's a reasonable thing to do?
Yes, we can, I'm just, my, my hesitation is, is, is timing here, but if people don't. Uh, people, as long as people appreciate that it's going to be a little bit at the last minute and it will be a lot of time for. Review before you're, you need to finalize it Tuesday night.
Yeah, we're not going to be taking major, um, edits, but it'll give people an opportunity to. Pick and choose their battles and remember that there, the individual letters, uh, from each of your organizations will go in our package. And be referenced by a, a cover letter of some sort.
Um, Eli, sorry to, uh, chime in again, um, could I ask one more question?
Sure, Ashley, go ahead.
Thanks, Eli. Um, I was wondering if. In your letter, you had a chance to discuss that, um. There is an aquifer that sits right under the site, which could potentially, you know, is referenced in our. Um, open space recreation plan, or I, I can't remember the name of the plan, but, um. As a potential future water supply and those wells. Is there room to include that? As a consideration that this site would impact a future water supply and past public water supply?
I'm gonna pass that one on to. Our board members to discuss, my, my only concern there is. That gets a little bit more into the speculative side of things as opposed to things that we. Have very, um, very well-defined backing for, um. Board members, how do you feel about, uh, adding, uh, a reference to that?
Eli, if I may.
Yeah, Becky.
Um, I think we all know that water is only going to become more precious. And, and I. I, I don't, I don't think it hurts to reference that there's an aquifer there. I don't think, don't know that we have to say that it's, you know, a potential water resource at some point. But the fact that I think we can just simply state there is, uh, an aquifer there. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me, uh, Becky. I, I, you know, I think that, I mean, we say critical water resources and I think that that could be expanded a little bit and to name a few names, obviously. We are referencing what's in the, in the documents that are provided and you don't want to. Repeat things in detail too much, but I think that we could expand. What those critical resources are within the letter and include an aquifer with, and I wouldn't go much more than that because the supporting information is going to provide that.
Yeah.
Okay. What, what we had said. In section two, which is probably moving to the environmental section is. As it serves as a matter of major water recharge area, serving the town's principal drinking water well. And I. I think. Speculating on places where things that it might affect, things that we might use later that, uh, we're not currently using, um. Lowers the impact of this site now, this project now threatens our current water supply.
Good. Those threaten.
That's it. It, it needs to be, uh, done carefully, uh, and with a great attention to detail and great regulation, otherwise it certainly would be a problem for our water supply. Unregulated, it would be a significant problem, I think.
I still think we could. Mention the aquifer. But I do agree with Dan, we don't, we don't want to minimize the, the immediate. Asked what's critical immediately, but I still think that that could play in. No, Anne, what do you? What do you think?
Something that might help gloss her sometime in the future, just, just is compelling to me as putting chemicals into the Lincoln Street well.
Fair.
I don't know whether anybody's actually going to read any of this, um, but. I'd like to make. The strongest arguments we can.
Succinct.
Yes, just the word.
Yeah, yep, I. I agree with. Succinct.
Jeff, any comments, Sasa?
Uh, no, I just want to be succinct. I, I know we're concerned about. Raising these points. Um, I'm just concerned that. The more detail there is in the letter on technical points or. This, this is not really a technical point, but, um, the, the. More likely that. It'll be missed. And I, and I think that, that emphasizing that this is our water supply that we feel is threatened. And that. In this whole process of. Eight months of, nine months of negotiation, depending on when you started. Um, and when it ended, I, I would say six months. We were not given access to specifics about the functioning. Of their water treatment that reassured me that these issues would be addressed. And they may say, okay, that's a zoning board issue, that's something that was mentioned a number of times, but, um. I, I think simpler is better. Reference to documents and if they want to learn more, they can look at the documents.
Okay. Other members of the public with comments. All right. Next time we do this, the, on the 22nd, the meeting is going to be entirely dedicated to going through just the document. In, in its entirety, and I think at that point, we probably will do this in presentation mode because we'll, we'll be working on a, a final draft at that point. And if folks from, um. SEMA or MECT, um. Or other major, um. Contributors or writers of letters. Want to have a preview of that draft letter, what I would suggest is you contact, um. Greg. And, uh, we'll, uh, see about getting a. A copy out. Yeah, it was something that's, uh, close to. In good shape, as possible. All right, um, board members, any other additional comments on this particular topic before we move on? All right. We're gonna take a quick pause, wait for Greg to come back from. Whatever the animal he was chasing around and, uh. On to our next agenda. Had a groundhog show up on my deck the other day, he was kind of poking his head up and looking inside the house like he wanted to come in. He was so cute, but I know he's going to destroy practically everything.
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on to the consent agenda, I had number five on the agenda. We have two things now, once the board selected the meeting minutes from June 7th and one is a touch attract, touch the truck event scheduled for July 29th. With a rain date of August 5th. Uh, does anybody have any comments from the board, uh, have any comments on either of those items?
No minutes, right?
Huh? What?
I thought it said that there were no minutes, I didn't see any.
I'm sorry, no minutes.
It's just, it's just a touch a truck.
Yep, 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 sorry.
I move that we approve the touch, the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, roll call vote, Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bob Merton?
Yes. I love touch a truck.
You betcha.
You betcha, so that's a yes, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Bowling votes yes. Item number six on the agenda, town administrator. Town administrator's report.
Oh yeah, it's very briefly, um, rapidly closing, coming to the end of the fiscal year, uh, June 30th. Uh, we will be needing your approval for some transfers, um, principally in, in fire and police salaries for. Some, some injuries and extra overtime. Were required, and so we do need some dollars transferred there, um, as well as, um, in our legal professional services. A lot of that's related to the, to the 40B review, um, so we'll have those numbers for you at your first meeting in July. The, the question of, for the issue of, of traffic calming continues to persist. It's, we, we haven't been addressing, uh. For a while, the issue of, um, you know, ways to calm traffic, either with speed tables or more crosswalks, speed signs, that sort of thing. I know that obviously we've been preoccupied with a lot of other things, but I think it's a topic that we'll be needing to, uh, to revisit, um, in the, in the coming months. And we do have, um. One, one bid we received for the compost, uh, project, uh, the transfer station. Uh, we are in the process of, of going through that proposal carefully, uh, we'll be meeting with the, um, with the proposer. To go over it in some more detail as we try to, um, see if we can, um, move, move this project forward in a way that's, uh. Equitable for the town and, and moves us in a good direction. There are some challenges. You mentioned price increases, the, the cost of this project has, has grown significantly. So we are struggling with that, but we will continue to try to, uh, bring something to you in fairly short order. So that we can make a final decision on that. So I think those are the highlights I wanted to bring, obviously, uh, town meeting, uh, Monday. And hope to see, uh, see a nice crowd gathered, so the weather forecast is looking pretty good. Uh, it'll be warm, bring, bring a bottle of water because we will be sitting in the sun. It'll be setting fairly soon, but, uh, it is the longest day of the year as well, so. Uh, people should be, uh, be prepared for the weather. Hopefully it'll, it'll draw a good crowd.
Okay. Excuse me. Hate it when that happens. All right, um. I have no other matters, this may not have been reasonably anticipated by the chair. So unless there's anything else from other board members, I'll ask for motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Harrison?
Yes.
Let's stir around.
Yes.
Mr. Bob Merton. Mr. Bob Merton.
Okay, unmuted, yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes, please.
Mr. Bowling votes yes as well. All right, goodnight, folks, we'll see you at, uh, town meeting and then we'll see you again on Tuesday, 22nd.
Do let us know if we need to be there or where we need to be at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, we will let you know, we'll tell you before 6 o'clock.
Is, is Alan still doing pre-town meeting on Saturday?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's at, that's at 9, um, on, on Zoom.
Okay, um, all right, thank you.
Posted on the, uh, on the town calendar on the website.
Yep.
See y'all.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Bye.